Newport City Regular Council Meeting is called to order at 6:00 P.M. President of the meeting, President Chris Duchesne, Councilmember Charbonneau, Councilmember Curtis, appearing by virtually is Councilmember Alfred Chase, Senator James Johnson, City Manager Jonathan Delabria. Also is our Department, DPW Department head, as well as virtually is our Park and Recs Department head and our Controller and my, I know our Fire Chief is here. Who did I miss? All good? Tony Hopkins, is that Jennifer, is that you? No, Jennifer Hopkins. I'm just trying to identify who's on virtually.
Yes.
Okay. Our next item addition, I apologize for my words additions, deletions to the agenda. President Duchesne. Councilmember Charbonneau. Councilmember Curtis. Councilmember Alfred Chase.
Thank you.
Senator Johnson. Senator Martin. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which includes the regular minutes of April 15, 2024, special meeting minutes of April 25, 2024, payroll warrants for April 18, 2024, and May 2, 2024, counts payable April 17, 22, 25, and 29, 2024, and liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special events permits. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, comments? Further discussion?
Just on one of the vendor products, Obol Cafe, they didn't give the location.
Okay, so the treasurer has it, let's see.
No, that's Wednesday's on the line.
Okay.
Are you good? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please. Oh, I apologize, yes.
No, it's okay. I guess I just want comments from the council, this is kind of your first consent agenda with everything in the packet, just thoughts as a whole, is it, you're liking it, it's...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post aye, ayes have it, and the motion is carrying. Next item on the agenda is the Public Records Request Policy Anticipated Vote. To promote timely and coordinated responses to records requests and to best comply with Vermont Public Records Act, we've actually put together a city's policy on administration of the public records request, and once adopted, it should also be posted on the city's website. You have had that draft in your minutes the last round, and now you have it again here. So may I have a motion to adopt the policy on administration of public records requests as presented?
So...
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post aye, ayes have it, and the motion is carrying. Next item on the agenda is an Annual Spending Freeze Discussion. The mayor's charged with taking care that the finances of the city are properly expended and ringing before the council any items deemed worthy of their attention so that they can, we can all carry out the affairs of the city prudentially and efficiently. In the mayor's absence, the president is charged with that duty and will continue to act in the mayor's stead. So there was, there is no spending freeze that the council brought about, and that should be noted, the council did not vote on a spending freeze. There was an email that was sent out that may have caused a bit of confusion, but the intent of the email, I believe, was just to alert the department heads that they were hitting budget numbers and not, it should not have been an actual directive to freeze. Any directives or recommendations to freeze would come to the mayor and the council by the city manager or the treasurer, and then we would take it from there after a vote. So what I would like to do at this point in time, you have in your packet, or you saw the email, so the email did not create an actual freeze, okay, but I would like to speak with the city manager, have him address some of the budget numbers that are being reached, so that we could at least have an alert and be ready in case there's going to be an issue, and if not, if we can be aware that monies are going to come in soon so it might be time of issues. So would you take it from there? Thank you.
So in your packet, as you get once a month, kind of a budget status update that gets printed out from Nemrec, you can see that our police department in the expense side appears over, we actually did just submit reimbursement for the Stone Garden grant, so we're going to be getting back some refund, which is allocated as part of that overspending. The fire department is at 72, 73 percent. Again, just a note on that is that they are paid quarterly, so you have the final three months of the year for that department that their staff is paid out, so that's why they're showing a little under budget at the moment. Public Works is at 86 percent, so right where I anticipate them being with two months left, and then Recreation is at 88 percent, so again, kind of right, right in that targeted area. So again, I think just we need to be careful as we're getting to our fiscal year end, and just making sure that we are kind of focusing operationally, additional needed expenses, just, I wouldn't say, you know, that there's a freeze, but just again, making sure that we're cautious, because at the end of the year, we don't want to run a deficit, and I'm going to have to go back to the voters and ask for more money, so.
Any questions? Questions?
What's all this attached?
I had asked the city manager to put together whatever might have been approved under this email, because I was a little concerned that it was a misdirective, and so I just wanted to be absolutely sure that everybody understood that it wasn't a real freeze, that, and, and once again, it would be the city manager who would make, bring that to us and then issue the directive. Everybody good? You good? Next item on the agenda is the Laramie Water Resources Consulting, and it'd be a discussion. So it was identified that Laramie Water Resources Consulting, there was never an actual approved formal contract with that vendor, and apparently this started way back when there was a need for the water treatment plant to operate, because the internal employees did not have the specific credentials, I think there might have been a turnover at that time. And so particular payments were just being approved through warrants as opposed to an actual approval of a contract and looking at it. And the monies were coming out of the water fund, and then, correct me, please, and then the sewer fund as well, the water and sewer fund. However, if we can get an update on the credentials that are now held within the city, I think it is important for us to know that, because this is an exorbitant amount of money to be spending. So do we have an update on who holds what credentials in that department?
We do have one grade three wastewater operator.
Okay, and how would that, is that all we need? I mean, help.
Again, I am certainly not the person...
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to get some information, I mean, so we, we know, do we need to hire somebody else, is one person efficient, like, you know, was that person who had the credentials just not doing the work anyway? I mean, I just want to know the background, so we could discuss this and see if that's the way to proceed. Who can help? Are you, would you like to? I don't, do you mind?
You looking at me?
Yeah, I just, well, I was looking at the city manager, I just want some information on how, what you need in your department.
Well, quite honestly, I wasn't ever privy to this original discussion, but if you want an explanation, sure, I certainly would give you an explanation, but...
No, what I'm looking for really is, how do you need, is there a required amount of people that you need to have this credential, is it one person enough, is it fair to put the burden on one person, just in general?
So a little history, our last, other than Jason, who currently is a grade three wastewater operator, the last operator we had that was a grade three was back in 2017, and that's when Phil came, came on. By law, we have to have a grade three operator for the wastewater plant to run our facility. So Phil has been filling that void for a number of years. In the past couple of years, we've had a major turnover of, of people. My last operator that ran the plant ran it very well, but he was a grade two, didn't get his grade three, and he, and he resigned, he got done. Phil has been filling that void, no pun intended there, throughout all this. Yes, Jason does have a grade three. We also lost another employee back in December, so Eric Carrier, the other employee that's been there for quite three years, doesn't hold a license, and for quite a few months now, Jason and Eric have been the only two covering on calls. You know, every, one person has to be on call every week, somebody's at that plant every day of the week. So I hired a new guy in January, he's been with us since then, he doesn't hold any licenses. I have another employee who'd been out for 10 months, so I have not pushed to take Phil out of the equation. We have had a discussion a couple of months ago about where we might leave with this. We had kind of a plan, so this, this meeting was kind of news to me last minute, but, you know, if we're looking to get away from Phil, eventually that is the goal, absolutely. But this is our drinking water, and this is our wastewater plant, so I do have concerns whether Jason's ready for that right now, with everything else that's going on, we're being pushed for water meters, those are the guys that put the water meters in. I've got to do lead and copper, which is going to be hitting the papers here and on the board pretty soon, where we have to access every property in the city of Newport to observe what that water line is. So we've got a lot of big things going on, and I, I'm nervous to say that, you know, Phil, he lives here, he'll always be around, and eventually, yes, Phil's going to go away. But there's a lot of maintenance at that facility that, you know, I'm not quite sure my staff is ready for.
So, so is it safe to say that you need a minimum of two or three people with these credentials, where's your comfort level?
The goal at the wastewater plant, when I hire anybody at that wastewater plant, the goal is that they all get their grade three. That is the goal, and that is what is put in the ad when we, when we do the hiring. Ultimately, they have to get it. Have I been pushing it, would say my oldest one other than Jason? Not as much, because I've had such a turnover of people, I don't, I can't afford, we can't afford to move more staff. It's hard enough to find staff and keep it. So our last discussion with Phil was, we move away from that, possibly utilize Phil for a year to do some heavy maintenance where the, all my new staff can observe that, work with him, and know what it is that that facility has to do on a yearly basis, and then move away from Phil. That was my ultimate goal, and that's what Phil and I had originally planned a couple of months ago. Again, my last employee just came back to work three weeks ago, so we are currently fully staffed, so ultimately, that would be the way I'd want to go. Look at that list with Jason, see what we can do, if we can do some of it, we'll take it off and negotiate something with Phil to do the heavy lifting of all the components down there on a maintenance or replacement project.
Could you just tell us when your foreman had the credentials?
When did he have, Jason's had it, I think almost a year? Phil, you might know.
Okay, so it's...
It's been a while, but again, we've had a turnover of people down this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get your thoughts.
I, yeah, I only need one person to hold a license to...
For the licensing, but, but doing the work is something entirely different.
That's completely different.
Right, and so I just, that's what I'm trying to distinguish, is you have the license, so right now, that's not the issue. The issue is now, who's qualified, and how many people you have to feel comfortable to provide the goods to.
So you, just to, just for instance, Pedro Goddard left us in July of '22, Tim Jajas left December of '21, Alex Russell left May of '21. So in that short amount of time, I lost three people that had been with us for, for a while. Pedro was with us for 17 years.
And they were all licensed, credentials?
No, none of them were.
Okay.
None of them were. But they were all, they all ran the plant very well. To get licensed in the state of Ammon, you have to be able to take a test that you can run any facility in the state. Pedro ran that facility very well, he knew the facility, had all the faith in the world in him. But again, I lost a lot of years of knowledge when those guys left.
Understood, and I appreciate it, thank you. Questions, discussion?
May I have a question?
Yes, Councilmember Alfred Chase.
So if I read Phil's letter correctly, it looks to me like we're spending $1,500 a week, which translates to $78,000 a year for that contract, is that right?
Excellent. Yes, my man. Yes, yes, the answer was yes.
So I guess, you know, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to sort out is, if we're fully staffed, what is the, is there a track that we can be following? I don't, I don't need it to sound like it has to happen today or tomorrow, but what's the path we follow to get, to get the training certification, both the training and the certification, because I'm hearing loud and clear that those are two different things, right, but have enough people trained so that we have a backup, so that we can let go with that 80 grand a year that we're currently doing with Phil? And if, if it's going to take us a year to do that, can we have a plan for what the kind of, what the benchmarks are throughout the year, so that we know we're making progress toward them?
So let me just recap for what I believe was Mr. Bernier said, was that he does have a plan, he's going to start to wean his employees in to work underneath Laramie Consulting to be trained, and Mr. Bernier will watch that, and there will be a wean out. As far as the timeline and deadlines, that's the department head, he hasn't stated that, but I'm going to give you the floor. So George, you still there?
So I didn't bring it in here with me, but the information that Phil had supplied to me, I think it was 50, 52,000 somewhere, if, if we were to have him do all the maintenance, and there's a few other things that he does that he'd still have to continue to do, but to sit down, now that we're fully staffed, to sit down with Phil, sit down with Jason, and see what it is we can do, I'm sure there's a lot on that list we can take off and then figure this out now. That's been the goal. Again, I had no idea when my, what person was coming back. That, that is the long...
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
No, I'm saying, I have no follow-up, thank you. I appreciate the answer.
Any further discussion here?
Rick kind of hit on my question too, so.
Councilmember, you good, or you have some question?
No, no, okay, 72,000 a year, right, the warrant says 6,000 a month. So my question is, why aren't the guys trained to work down here? I helped build that sewer plant in 1981 as a laborer, and I know every pump and everything, so without sounding sarcastic, I'm just curious as to why the people down here don't know when to change oil in the pump, when to grease it, when to maintain it, especially if Phil's been there since 2017. Seems like something fell apart, and I sell a lot of money every month. Kind of my question answered, Phil, Jason's been class three water and sewer for a year or more, but we've still been paying that money. I will say that Phil Laramie, in my opinion, was an awesome, excellent employee, and he stepped up to help the city when needed, so I don't want to make a motion to get rid of him now, but perhaps at our next meeting, if I have more information about where things start.
Fuck, sorry? No, it's okay, can I ask you a couple of, no, just... I thought you were saying a 6/3, I didn't realize there was an early start time. It's okay. Mr. Bernier, do you think it would be feasible for you to have, have a meeting and come up with some type of suggested plan, it's not the concrete one, but suggested plan, so that we can have some type of timeline, and who would be trained, and so on and so on, and I know that you have your day-to-day operations, that's going to change everything, that whatever we say one day, it's always changed, I get that, so do you think you could work on that, so that we could put this back on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. You good with that?
I'm good.
Good with that? Thank you. You good with that? Okay. Sure. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the City Council Budget Expenditures. As you know, we're going through all of the financials, this isn't like a target, this is like we want to get everything together and make sure we address everything that packs up, so we want to make sure that things are not just automatically being signed through warrants, that we address everything that's on there, and everything gets approved appropriately. So you have in your packet, printout from the city manager regarding the city expenditures. And some of the questions that I have and that will be addressed by the city manager, there's a section that says payments to First Bank Card, and I understand that this accounting system, you can't itemize, that you have to get these batch printouts, and so the city manager's going to be looking into that to see how we can find out what those line items mean on those credit cards. Okay, so in other words, you see what's a bank card, it's a batch number, and we can't really say what was used in the credit card for this, so we do credit card for that, and where should it be actually placed? So we need that detail. And so the city manager's going to do that. The other thing was, there was a question I saw, Boeing Computing was under office supplies, is that just because you got office supplies that he used, or why would the IT person be under office supplies, do we know that?
I'd have to call the invoice, I'm not sure.
Okay, so these are just types of questions that are sticking out, and there's an item, Council Special Projects, I didn't see an itemization for that. Do we know what makes that up?
No. I mean, to me, again, the bank card piece, then the majestic trophy, so I don't know...
So you could kind of just look into that.
... anyone an award.
Oh, the trophies I saw, yeah, sure, those I saw. But then there was other itemizations I didn't know if, I saw the trophies.
Yeah, just, just the bank card are the only other ones. So again, it's just getting detail on the credit cards.
Right, okay, and then I see the American Legion flags are in there, this is just a question, so those are for burial flags for...
Yeah, the Legion puts a flag on every veteran's grave on there, East Main Chief Cemetery, Catholic Cemetery, and Pine Grove, so there's three cemeteries they go through, every veteran gets a flag.
So, so that, and I, I think that's wonderful, my big, my question is, why would that not go through the cemetery, and so why would it come through us? It's just a question.
It's just a donation on the city's part.
So it's done as a donation, okay. So, and then can any, or has any other organization who does these burial flags, do they apply or ask for it, or is this the only one?
I don't know of any other one. I know Derby donates to that also, we do. DFW, I don't think has a flag program, but I think Legion's the only one in town.
So, and they do this every year?
Well, maybe in the budget now, but maybe every other year they could actually get the flags. If they go more than a year, more than two years, and they get ragged and freighted and all that other stuff. We like to have nice specials.
Fresh, yeah, right, okay. So I just wanted to see how, how the process worked, and it's, it's like a flat rate, and so do they give you, say we want, because it's treated as a donation, is that it? So it's just this like $500 donation every year versus this is the cost of the flags?
Yeah, every year they're going to buy them, we give them $500.
Okay, so regardless...
They got some this year, next year if they don't buy them, the 500 is in the budget, but they may, they probably want to request it.
Understood.
It works out about every other year, but...
Understood, okay. Any questions?
Why are the limits attached to this?
It was identifying the history of the flags. So I wanted to be sure that everything, we're bringing it all together and everything was done, was done appropriately. So it's not a surprise that it was there. I'm just trying to make some clarification.
What's the three fifty-nine made out to you for?
Your bond.
So what is it?
It is the bond.
The bond?
For the bond, equal to council change. Totally highlighted that one.
What's he talking about?
So the bond, that, remember I did the blanket bond for everybody for three fifty-nine for the bond? Any other questions on this area? Are you good, Senator? City manager, you good?
Yep.
Council member, Alfred Chase, are you good? Okay.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the purchasing policy. And so the city manager is our administrator. We walk through the purchasing policy and want to make sure that there's oversight, specific separation duties, that the bid process goes out with us and handicap the operations of the city, that when there are sealed bids, they're opened appropriately, things, and everything is advertised appropriately. You have that purchasing policy in your packet. I don't know if you had an opportunity to actually read through it thoroughly at this point in time. But this is just a discussion and we will get to, it'll be moved for a vote on the next agenda. But if anybody has any questions on what you've read through, we can get into a discussion.
We didn't have to go through the lawyers for this, did we?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Because it's verbatim.
Yeah, exactly.
Except I was wondering how come you left out the part about the the section about rejecting a bid? Uh, will be on page three.
Right, that was the unilateral rejection?
On, yeah. On BLCT, they have the municipality serves the right to reject any and all bids or to take the second place, yeah, whatever. Is that something we need or?
No, but, so we have under here the bid specifications with page one.
Page three.
Yeah, okay. So we have the sealed bid process and the bid specifications.
Yeah.
And so it's, you have the right to, but it wasn't like a requirement that we put that into, you must reject and so on. But I mean, it could be added if you wanted it. It's not anything that's.
I was in the original policy. I don't know if it was, did we need it or was your experience?
No. Go ahead.
I've seen it in there before.
Yeah, it was in, it's in and out, so it's. So Matt, it's not an issue to put it back in if you want that language in. It's easily put in.
Was it ever something where a bid, you know, have somebody contest it that they weren't selected? Or saying my bid was lower, why did you go with that guy?
I mean, so certain grant programs are going to force you to go with a low bid. I think having good justification, right? You've got to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. Bid specifications are the same. But I think Kevin's not wrong. I think that language gives the council some flexibility to reject a bid, should you choose.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue whatsoever putting that in. It was just that when they were researching and going through it, it was just kind of something that it wasn't mandatory. So it's totally, we could put that in as a disclaimer. I have no problem with that. Would you like that put back in?
I, it's not.
I'm like, you know what I'm saying is, no, I'm saying, why don't we put it in in parentheses and we'll bring it back? Because we're going to be discussing it again and we can do a little bit more research on that. And we could definitely have that. Is there anything else for you?
Sole source purchases or those unique items that can only be purchased from one place? And it's not possible to get two or three estimates?
Yep.
Are they able to do that without specifying in the purchase policy?
Yes.
Like on page six of the BLCT, BLCT, it said if the municipality determines that there's only one source for public purchase, it may waive the bid process and authorize a purchase from a sole served source. I don't know if that happens much.
Yep.
I would think the only ones would be perhaps a fire disarmment place.
But there may be instances where, and I think we should try to go out to bid, but there may be specific examples.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing that we can't put back in. It's just a matter of how detailed, do we want to get now specific and locked in? So it pretty much gives, the city manager has the authority in here to make those decisions. So it's a matter of how detailed do we want to get? And sometimes it's better to not be as detailed as, as long as the decision-making can be done. So I'm good with either way.
Can I nicely word it, wording, can I?
Okay, here.
Thank you. This is the BLCT model.
And I'm happy that we're utilizing a free service rather than letting them determine any.
But that's good. So those two points, what I'm going to ask the city manager to do is if you'll plug those in to the draft and then we can sit down and we can go through them and we can do some research and then we could come back and inform the council. And then it'll be on the agenda so that you can vote. Are you good with that?
Yep.
Definitely some good items on the agenda here.
Thank you.
Where it says posting that you include a lot of different ones other than the newspaper.
Yep.
Really good. That's why I wondered if a lawyer approached right next.
And I was just, yeah.
Is there a current, oh, we're seeing?
Yes, that's what Kevin was referring to, but he pulled it.
This is an update?
This is the update to it. So any other questions or, and we can definitely get, work on that and.
I guess if there are other questions that come up after.
Could just email, right. And we'll definitely address those. But I would like to get this on the agenda next round to have it voted on. Council member, Alfred Chase, do you have any specific questions or are you good?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Are you good? Okay. The next item on the, on the agenda is the Causeway project street lighting bid with an anticipated vote. And just a little history on this, what I'm trying to find out is how this bid process happens. Bring us up to speed on, was it a sealed bid? What, how did it go through? Who opened it? Was it done in accordance with the bid process? And then we can look at the attached bids and we can walk through those and get some information on them and we can take it to a vote. Who can? Thank you.
You're welcome. So I advertise for the bids through the Newport Daily Express. The streetlights and poles, I worked through Swainy Lighting was actually a company that the engineers utilized in the design process. So they gave me two contractors to reach out to bid on it along with Green Mountain Electric. I submitted them each a formal request for bid, a sealed bid. Two of them sent back a sealed bid. The highest bid, EW Electrical of Stouton, Mass. did not. He sent, he emailed me back his bid. Green Mountain Electric also bid on the electrical supplies, the conduit and the pole boxes and stuff along with the Farmyard Store in Derby. Those were the two bids there. They both submitted sealed bids to me. I opened those bids and the memo I'd written to you on April twenty-fourth is outlining the costs of the project. Northeast Electrical out of Concord, New Hampshire was the low bid on the streetlight poles and hardware for seventy-four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. And Green Mountain Electric was the low bid on the electrical supplies, the conduit and pole boxes for thirteen thousand eight seventy-nine twenty-eight.
So when you sent, you sent out the bids and I also understand that it was also working with a directive from the grant managers as well on some. So when the bids come back in, you send them out, they come back in, how are they opened?
I opened.
The sealed bids. Okay, so going forward, follow this process that's going to be approved so that the sealed bids aren't opened in the presence of somebody else. And then we stand off and there way it goes. And the, were all of these bids required based on Mr. Welsh's request? Or were, like, were they all under that one grant?
Well, I think the only, the only grant that, the portion of what we're doing is under the MBI C.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just want to clarify because I was getting questions and I just want to have all these.
Yeah, no, I believe the electric light is under the USDA grant.
Okay, and so your recommendation is? For?
Oh, so, sorry.
It's okay.
So under the streetlight poles and the hardware, which is the poles and the lights themselves, Northeast Electrical out of Concord, New Hampshire was the low bid for seventy-four thousand one fifteen. And the electrical conduit and supplies, Green Mountain Electric of Derby, Vermont, for thirteen thousand eight seventy-nine twenty-eight.
Have you ever worked with any of these companies before?
Green Mountain Electric, honestly, I wish you'd been a little bit. They weren't on, we bought all our many street poles from them. We deal with them a lot. I also deal a lot with Farmyard Store. They deal with bike and whatnot too. So as far as the electrical conduit and supplies, I deal with both those Derby businesses quite often. I've never dealt with Northeast Electrical out of Concord, New Hampshire.
Okay.
This is grant requirements to pick the low bid?
I believe so. I mean, I'm sure, I'm, you know, it wasn't a huge amount of money, but it's, you know, still tax dollars.
Okay, so it's required?
I believe it is.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councilman.
So I think along a similar line, I just have to, I'm just going to put myself out there as the new kid on the block who really doesn't have a lot of experience with this stuff. So I'll ask questions that may make me look naive and ignorant and maybe they'll help other people too. So one question I have is whether or not there is anything in these bids about timeline. So are we only looking at price or are we also looking at when they expect to be able to accomplish the work? That's my first question. I'll just get all three out on the table. My second question is, I read quickly this morning the packet including the item that was just before us a moment ago on procurement. And I don't think I see anything in that document that would give us leeway as a council up to a certain, you know, amount, like two percent difference or something like that, to support local businesses over out-of-state businesses or businesses that are farther away. I know there's a part of that document that says that we are appropriately, in my mind, bound to assure that we are soliciting bids from women-owned and minority-owned businesses wherever possible. But I don't see any reference to local businesses, which is actually a significant concern of mine. So I guess my third question is really kind of lumping those two together and kind of just admitting my ignorance. Is there any way those things can be addressed if not on this, for this contract or if not on this contract for the future? So that we have a little bit of leeway when there's a seventy-five thousand dollar contract and a difference of fifteen hundred bucks? So that we could support a locally owned business that at least hopefully would be able to give us a more responsive timeline as well?
So I think, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, as far as the, the light poles and the lights themselves, they all bid the same product. So I would assume the timeline would probably be fairly same depending on who we go with. And quite honestly, I, I wish we could go keep it local myself. I wouldn't disagree with that at all. But since we do have a grant here, I don't think we should, we can jeopardize it.
Right, now you can, right, but we can research that.
On grant stuff, I think.
We could research that and definitely see legally if there's any issues and we'll definitely look into that. So will you put that on our pit list of, we have to do, you're good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Sure.
Tom probably remember this. I'm not an expert in this, but I think a long time ago, there was, probably if it wasn't grant related, that if the low, if the local person was in five percent of the low bid, they got the, they got the job.
You are right, and I can remember back a pickup that we bought. Hayes Ford, he and Byron Motors both did it. And Hayes was five percent low of what, and at the time Ford used to always give a really good municipal discount. And I think they all knew that. We ended up going with Byron Motors because at the time it was, you know, it was a significant amount of money. So five percent can add up to what is that?
Okay.
Had they been in New Hampshire or somewhere, I'm sure we would have stuck with these.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we will definitely look into that. So as it stands now, I need a motion to approve the bids that Mr. Bernier would like to have approved. Somebody like to make a motion? It's in your, the bids are in your packet.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
What is the motion? To approve the two low bids?
To approve the, what Mr. Bernier has is the specific bids and he wants those approved, the low bids. One for the electrical conduits plows, and he gave you the breakdown, and one for the streetlight poles.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Further discussion?
Is this an electric light company that's putting these up? Is that part of our, is that the right name of the company?
The name of the company, is this the correct name of the company?
No, the electric light company is the one that's doing the other part of the bid with the mast arms and the traffic lights themselves and the intersections. The street lighting is a part, portion of that public works department. They, we actually have to install all the conduit and the sleeves across the road, but they will do all the wiring to everything.
I'm good.
You're good? I, oh, yes, well, I have.
Are we absolutely sure we have to go this lowest? Because I think we all kind of feeling differently, not differently, but wanting to go local. Are we absolutely sure that's the lowest bid or?
Well, I think on this particular grant, this specific one, I think Mr. Bernier said we had to follow that. And correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I mean, if, I hadn't talked with Mike Welsh, but I'm under the impression that we have to. But if you approve tonight and say that either if we can go with the next bid up, if we don't have to go with the lowest bid, the only problem I had was they all bid the same product. If we said it was two different products and we liked the other version better, we could possibly go with that. I guess that's up to the council.
So could we get a friendly amendment then? You made the motion come in that says that we'll go with the bids. However, with the option that if it is, if a local can be used, that we will be able to change it for a local. that we will be able to change it for a local. In other words, what Mr. Bernier is saying is that he's going with the lowest bid right now. But he'd like to be able to go local if it doesn't affect the grant and he needs to check with the grant manager.
Challenge is we, we can't wait to come back here.
That's what I mean, that's what, right.
Yeah, I just want to add something too. Reason I really wanted to push this through is I, I couldn't order, I can't order the concrete pedestals that they sit on until I get the poles and none of them would give me the correct bolt pattern so that I could order the concrete, which is the groundwork that I really need to get going. So that's been a crucial element to this whole process. None of them would give it to me. You get online and it gives you two different versions. So I, I didn't want to order sixteen pedestals at thousands of dollars not knowing what the bolt pattern was.
I just, I understood. So where do I make, get this through? I just want to make sure we give you that caveat.
Yep, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that'd be good. And the local company, you'd be able to go up there and find out what's happening.
Right.
It's always better to do it in person.
So it was your motion, so now I have the friendly amendment.
So I have to rescind my motion? And remake a motion that would?
Approve the streetlight poles, hardware and electrical conduit and supply vendors that Mr. Bernier recommends with the allowance for Mr. Bernier to go and consult with the grant manager to see if a local company can be used and then allow Mr. Bernier to make that decision.
The. Got that one? Yeah, we're here. So I'll, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
I'd like to hear Kim repeat.
So all those in favor, oh, yes, I'm sorry, comment here. Oh, Commissioner?
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't Mr. Curtis second the first motion that Mr. Charbonneau made?
No?
It has to be removed and then make, make that motion.
Commissioner, thank you. Okay, we won't let that. So it was rescinded?
We're going to have a second.
Okay. Mended motion. Here we go. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried, approved by our Commissioner. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, I see him. Yes, sir.
Yes, Madam Mayor, can I have a copy of the paperwork? Can I have a copy of the paperwork, all the bids submitted? What is the grant? And Mr. Delugria said, you can't wait for this? I'm a fair citizen, why can't, why not?
This was supposed to be brought up a couple of weeks ago and as Mr. Bernier said, he can't order a, without the, and he's leaving on all these specifications. So there's a time crunch for him to get this going. And we don't want to hold it up any longer to wait and ask questions. So we want to give him the discretion to be able to go forward and get what he needs clarified. We totally trust his ability to have that discussion and, you know, go forward and choose the bid.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, you're talking about a grant, is the, what's the name of the grant or is that, is that in here somewhere?
So that is, okay, so the city manager will get you the paperwork for that.
And when are you, when is, when are you guys looking to do this? Is that a project for this year?
Yes, it started, it's going to start. This is what we're waiting for, this is the big project. So we need to allow him to go out there while the sun's shining.
Sure, then what's the date, what's the start date?
Do you know the start date or the anticipated start date?
I have no idea. It depends on when we can get the materials. And as I said, the concrete pedestal along with the conduit is the most crucial part.
And these are for streetlights, not traffic lights?
They're street lighting.
Yes.
The portion I'm doing.
You good?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Twenty-twenty-four Local Emergency Management Plan with an anticipated vote. Okay. So you have in your packet the local management plan with the adoption form that needs to be authorized. You'll notice that the city manager worked through this plan and with NVDA. And there was a lot of communication on this emergency plan throughout, for a couple of months, actually. And so if you look through, you will see that in case there is an emergency, it would, who would be the appropriate operations center to call it. Understood that the mayor and the president of the council would be kept in immediate notice, notification that if there's an emergency, both of us would definitely be advised forthwith and then we would advise the council on helping with what we need to do. But could you look through this and see if you have any questions? It's like a job well done, so.
We only made a couple of updates, so.
But still, you know, you have to go through it and it was a good job.
Let me know if you want any more background too.
Councilmember Upper Chase, do you have any questions or are you good?
No questions. I appreciate the work that's gone into updating it.
Mr. President?
Possibly.
Okay, we'll move to Councilmember Curtis.
Oh, I'm sure some of those are definitely wrong.
Yeah, those ones are bad because.
Okay.
I just wondered what the update was.
Because I may need to.
Well, I'm sure most of the updates are names and physicians and.
So on the list of vulnerable populations, like, so they had Newport Healthcare listed still, so we took that one out. You know, Chris just mentioned another one. So if there are others that you see that are non-existent or the contact has changed, please, please let us know. And we certainly do not call every one of these to ask. We just do continuous updates on a manual basis.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Local Emergency Management Plan Municipal Adoption Form as presented and of course with the understanding that the city manager or the persons currently listed is authorized to activate the EOC will provide continual information to the mayor and the president of the council for this.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, comments? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the Grants and Aid Letter of Intent with an anticipated vote. I'm going to ask the city manager if you wouldn't mind just giving us a little bit of background on this if you could.
Sure. So the Grant and Aid Program is now through V-Trans. It started as a pilot program to basically help municipalities bring our roads up to the MRGP standard. Tom is very familiar with the MRGP. It just talks about our hydrologically connected road segments. You will augen to the A and R Atlas and it highlights different road segments and if they're meeting compliance. This is a guaranteed grant program and it's based on the number of hydrologically connected segments that determines how much money every municipality is given on a manual basis. For us, we get roughly twelve thousand dollars a year through this program that basically goes to the highway department to allow them to help implement some of these pieces. This is just a, a letter of intent, so once they get these by the deadline, which I believe is May 10th, they'll then redo the calculation. So if some municipalities choose not to participate, the dollar amounts get averaged and will go up a little bit, but it won't go down. Twelve thousand?
Twelve sixty-five.
Okay. It's a twenty percent match. You know, and speaking to Tom, he mostly says we'll, we'll buy stone with this and we'll use our equipment and labor as the match to install it. So typically it only costs us what we've already budgeted in our highway department's time to implement some of these best practices. So it's, again, it's a guaranteed program, it's non-competitive and all we have to do is elect to participate.
Councilmember Upper Chase, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Any questions? You're good?
Sounds good to me.
So may I have a motion to approve the Letter of Intent to participate in the SFY twenty-five? Am I doing the right one?
Yep.
Municipal Roads Grant and Aid Program and authorize the city manager to be the primary contact with the city clerk as the secondary contact.
Make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, a motion in the second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the Merp Mini Planning Grant with an anticipated vote. Cardiffing actually had brought, the Merp Coordinator and NVDA had brought this mini grant to our attention, to the comptroller and myself before the city manager was actually on board. And I'm pleased to see it's back here. So does somebody want to speak to this? Do you, Gang City Manager, will you address this?
So. Yeah, it's funny that you mention that. So the Merp is state ARPA money. It's called the Municipal Energy Resilience Program. It's a three-phase grant that every municipality in the state is eligible for. In coming here, I remember seeing it very early on and just reading agendas prior to coming here that the, the second phase was on our agenda, which are building audits to evaluate what we're using in energy consumption for our buildings. Getting here, I actually reached out to NVDA and said, you know, have we secured the first phase? And he said, no. So my thought was to bring it back. And so I'll kind of back up. The first phase is this four thousand dollars. That's a very flexible pot of money that we can then use throughout the second and third phases. We can use it to send postcards to residents, we can use it to help us with food for public meetings. It's very flexible how we can spend it. When we get into the energy resilience and the implementation of some of these items in our buildings, we may want the public's input on which building, how far we go. So this is again that kind of flexible pot of money that we can utilize. The application deadline is actually closing May thirty-first, which is why I wanted to bring this back to us. We've already applied for and secured the second pot of funding. The third pot of funding is five hundred thousand dollars for the municipality to implement what Phase One and Two discovered. So it's just again that free money guarantee from the state. There is no match for any of these phases. And it's just state ARPA money that they're trying to get rid of before their deadline, which is the same as the, the locals' deadline.
Any questions?
Sounds like a good deal to me.
I have a question that.
Yes, Councilman.
Jonathan, you might be able to answer for me. My understanding, until I read this document, document in our packet, is that this is primarily designed to help actually like town halls reduce their own energy use. But as I read the packet, it looked like it was broader than that. It could also be, you know, eventually we might end up with a project that helps individual residents reduce energy use. Do you know whether, it doesn't matter, I think this is great, I'm going to vote for it no matter what, but I'm just curious about whether that distinction is real.
So the Phase One, yes, we can use this as it mentions here, send mailers to homes regarding weatherization programs. Phase Two is specifically municipally-owned buildings. And I believe we chose city hall, the fire station, public works, like, we chose all of our municipal buildings. And then the five hundred thousand dollars can only be used for municipal buildings as well, for those energy upgrades.
Thank you. That clears it up. Thanks.
So may I have a motion to authorize the city manager to apply for the Merp Mini Grant?
So moved.
I would love to make that motion.
Oh, too late, I have a motion, but you can make a second.
I'll make a second.
I have a motion in the second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Thank you very much for that. Okay, next item on the agenda. Is the Newport Community Sailing Center lease of dock space with an anticipated vote. And I know that Parks and Rec Director Michael Brown is here. Would you mind bringing us up? Hello?
Yes, sir.
This is too much fun. Would you mind bringing us up to speed, give us a little background and explain what this is all about? Because it's more than just a lease, it's, you know, and I know you have some input here. Well, it was fun. Can you hear us?
Sure.
So. So, Mr. Brown, if you could just hold for one second because we're losing you, maybe you can do something to make, do some magic.
Madam Mayor, can I speak for a moment?
Of course.
So I'm just going to note that I'm going to recuse myself from both the conversation and the vote because I serve on the board of Newport Community Sailing Center. So there's an obvious conflict of interest in this case. I believe that the board president, Randy McGonigal, may be there in the, in the audience. If we can't get Mike, he would be able to speak to this.
Understood. I'm going to actually have them both speak because I had some conversations with Mike Brown and I wanted him to do some clarification and then we're going to come there. But if we can't, we'll reverse it. So do we have Mike?
Mike, can you hear us?
I hope he can do his present.
Okay, how's that? Yep.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yes. I can hear you, can you hear me? Yes. Can you hear me? Hello? How's that? Okay, good. I'm going to go before we lose it again. So just, a very brief background. So ordinance one one. For, for the cit. The dock, the city council.
So. So will you be able to tell him that we can hear him and we're going to just reverse the process?
I was just going to call him.
Oh, okay, that's fine. And put him on the speaker.
He lost me. Again?
Can you take him to chat?
Can you hear me now?
Got a lot of technology.
Got a lot of technology. Hello, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you're by a microphone now, so...
Okay, good, thank you, I apologize for that, everybody.
No, it's not your fault. Go right ahead, you're on.
Okay, so to go along with ordinance 114 for the city docks, the city council needs to improve commercial rates. And this will be our second commercial venture down at the docks. So the proposed fee structure that you have in your packets, it's based on our current commercial rate of $75 per foot, but with the 50% discount. And that's to take into consideration that, one, it's a new startup nonprofit. And, two, it will be partnering with us to do sailing lessons once a week for day camp and to provide weekend classes for adults and youth. So this proposal also not only has the 50% discount, but it has an additional payment of 10% of their season's net revenue to make up the difference. So I think it's beneficial to both parties, them and the city.
Okay.
I'm just going to keep muting him so there's no feedback.
Yeah, okay. Would you take the mic? And thank you for coming tonight.
So I also want to introduce Mike Proto, he's also part of the board, as well as Rick, obviously. So I've worked with Mike Brown for probably six to nine months now, and Patrick Finn. So I proposed working with them back, like I said, nine months ago. And so we started a nonprofit back in the summer. And we've been getting boats on donation, we've also been purchasing some boats. So the boats that we plan to use are Optimus Prams, they're perfect platform for teaching children up to 15, 16 years old. So that'll be back in the Gardner Park area. That area that's currently not being used for literally anything other than fishing and perhaps kayaking every once in a while. So we'll be having a small fleet of boats back there, up to 10. Optimus Prams, we also have kayaks and standard paddleboards. So we'll be able to rent those out to either the public or partner with Mike on the camp program as well. We're also going to be having boats on the main lake here and we're currently working, trying to negotiate how we're going to run that. Those will be bigger boats and that's part of the commercial dollars as well. But right now, we're focusing on the Gardner Basin area. So that's what Mike and I are proposing at the moment. Any questions?
I just wanted to meet you, so...
Yeah, I've been working with Randy as well, if I may. The boats are, if you're not familiar with them, they're very small. They're very small boats, they're eight foot six. It's kind of a worldwide predominantly boat that every kid trains on at every sailing center. We were fortunate enough to have a boat, a yacht club down on the east end of Long Island, replaced our whole fleet and the Commodore Yacht Club approached me and said, "Do you want these boats for Newport?" So we have those actually given to us, we got them picked up and back here.
Where in Long Island?
It's on Fisher's Island, actually, the very end, yeah. I lived down there for, I grew up in Newport, by the way, too, and I taught myself how to sail on the lake and realized coming back here in 2020 that there really wasn't anything on the lake to do this. And our goal really is with the paddleboards and kayaks is to get people on the lake at any level because I think once you use the lake, you become a better steward to it and for it. So even our paddleboard stuff, we're going to do some of that on the main lake, but we're going to be like $15 an hour to be able to get on the lake. So even if you don't have a paddleboard, you're able to do it. Kids in that Gardner Park area, Randy and I both teach and coach skiing at JP. That's like a perfect little, perfect slope or kind of beginner terrain for sailing. So between Newport Parks and Recs having a program for us to add on to and then us bringing in our own kids too for three days a week, probably two, four-week sessions during the summer. We're getting this off the ground this year, we're funding it a lot ourselves, we're doing some fundraising now. So that's kind of what we've been working on in the year and I think being at Gardner Park would be a perfect spot for it, so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
If you guys want any other information, I've got postcards here, if I can just give it to you.
Sure, Ethan, why don't you put them up here?
And anybody else wants to grab them too.
If you put them up there, then at the end of the meeting, whoever would like one, they can actually do that.
Thanks for your time.
So may I have a motion to approve the fee structures presented to be incorporated into a lease agreement? Which lease agreement will be reviewed by the mayor and the city manager or the mayor's absence, the president of the council? And then we will present it to the council for a vote. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Thank you all, congratulations, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. So...
Madam Mayor, if I could just ask that my name included is listed in this section?
Yes. Treasure ahead, yeah. The next item on the agenda are appointments. I just wanted to give a quick, this is only a quick update. The council had as a courtesy allowed the planning review board to interview additional applicants. And I was advised that the coordination of those interviews were not yet taking place and they're going to be happening after tonight's meeting. And so letters of interest that have been coming in, et cetera, and I did publish requests for letters of interest and talk about that, so it's out there. And then the mayor will be reviewing other appointments that are already in place, as I discussed with the council member, and this will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Commissioner, are you, is that correct? You do not have the time yet for any of your interviews or whatever it is, right, that is going to happen? Good?
It's on the agenda, it's on the agenda, Mar 963.
Okay, but in case anything happens, you still have some time. So I just wanted to be sure that you all understood that this was just for me to alert everybody that it was moving forward. All good? All good? Okay. The next item on the agenda, agenda, sorry, is interview of the potential candidates for the fire chief. We had anticipated a potential executive session. However, we've been notified that we're going to have to move any discussion regarding these candidates until the next agenda. Next item. I'll just get that myself. Thank you, Councilmember. The next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present. I'm sorry. And that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council members are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council members are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council members are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in these meetings. And I thank you. So, Ms. Buerling, did you... It doesn't have a title.
It's because I didn't know whether or not I was going to speak. So it's Jennifer Buerling, resident of Newport, Vermont. It has to do with the appointment of the constable. So that's why I didn't know when it was on the agenda as appointments, if you were going to discuss it or not.
So, do you want to talk about it now or do you want to talk about it at the next meeting?
Well, I just wanted to raise the issue about the constable because I believe Mr. Charbonneau tried to bring it up at the last meeting and you had stated that it was going to be addressed at this meeting and it's not appearing that it's being addressed.
Right, and as I discussed, and I'm going to, as I discussed, we were doing some research and we're going to be dealing with all of that at the next meeting. So it's your call if you want to continue to speak.
That's all, I just, I mean, it's...
It's going to be on the next agenda, all the appointments.
It's barred by Vermont statute, so I expected that we were going to see it show up, but...
The appointments are going on the next meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Latt?
Pam Ladd, City of Newport. I have a comment. This relates to a previous discussion here, which is prior to your time. But it was about an employee slash non-employee slash consultant who did not have a contract. And that was Rob Narimow. And there was a lot of discussion about it and a lot of concern. And yet now, today, I see that from 2017 to 2024, we have another employee, non-employee consultant, whatever he is, and a company attached to that who is earning a whopping salary by any standards. And yet again, there has been no contract. Now I realize that one can be hidden away as an enterprise fund, which I assume is where it was buried somewhere because none of us knew about it. And I'm also assuming that nobody here knew about it. Because if you did, I would assume it would have been raised before. Are we going to find any more of these? It's very strange. So I'm asking the question, I would like a response if there is one.
So we are looking at all of the accounts and that's what we're doing. And we're going to be making appropriate adjustments and coming back. And as we've discussed going forward, any budget adjustments that need to be made, we will be putting all that together and addressing all of these.
Can I respond to that?
No. But thank you. So, next item on the agenda. New business. President Shine? Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Just quick, someone mentioned to me that the city website minutes regarding the city council are still in draft form. Have not had time to check myself. And I honestly forget if it's comptroller or city manager, whose job it is. I'm not sure, but just, I was told they're not updated. That's all.
Particular ones or the entire slide here?
No, I was told there were three or four that have come and gone and are still in my draft. I haven't looked myself. That's all.
Thank you, so look into that. Thank you. Councilmember Alfred Chase?
Nothing done, thank you.
Sheriff Johnson?
I do have some. What are we going to do with these vendor permits now?
Call for it.
Okay. So I've got vendor permit for Rhonda Curion who operates a model old-time kettle corn. She's got all her, she's got a payment with the picture of the insurance. And her location would be Gardner Park, County Beach, and a cider store on Westan Avenue. So I need a motion to accept that one, if so inclined. Prove that one.
Do I have a motion?
I'm waiting for a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, Ms.? Further discussion?
I'm confused because the consent agenda has the vendor permits or...
These are different.
That's all.
All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Okay, so the next one is Kevin's Hobo Cafe. He's got a check, insurance, pictures, and he wants to operate on the first Wednesdays, the four first Wednesdays, starting on July 3rd on Main Street.
On Main Street?
Yep. So I need a motion for that one, if so inclined.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in a second, any comments? Councilmembers, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
Thank you. And the next one is Alan Tammer Bowen, they have the Kingdom Eatery. That's the one on the east side across from Compton Farms. That's their location and if there's a Newport event, city event, they'll take part in that. And he's got the check, pictures, and the insurance, everything is kosher, so I made a motion for that one, if so inclined.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in seconds, comment? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
Okay, I've got one more. This is not in your packet because the Niles Fund Request and that's got income in it. I'll pass this down. This fellow has had it before. He does need it and he very grateful we get it to him every once in a while. You know, pass it down, you can see who it is. Somebody will recognize the name, I'm sure.
Councilmember Alfred Chase, this was not in our packet. So this is a Niles trust fund application for assistance that, just because you haven't seen it. So I want you to understand what you're voting on, so if you have any questions.
I think having not seen it, I'll probably just abstain from this vote.
Sure, please, the treasurer's going to explain it a little further.
People who apply for this have to be 60 years of old, they have to be Newport residents. And there's an income cutoff. And it's going to be used for medical purposes or life of liberty and pursuit of happiness, I guess is a good way of putting it. And they have to meet the qualifications, this man does, so.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. So may I have a motion?
So, that's my, my...
The Niles Fund has its own funds.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. That is it for you. City manager, anything? So I have just a couple of things to say. On May 13th, remember, we have the community forum where the state, Vermont, treasurer will be here, Northeast Kingdom International Airport Task Force members, we have Newport Downtown Development, members of our council and our police chief will be part of an expert panel with other experts on it to discuss financial programs, housing and economic development, safety needs and expansion needs in the city. Please, this is your opportunity to come and ask questions. Any KTV will be filming the forum with live links. Senator Russ Ingles, the mayor, city manager will be hosting. We ask that you come and show up because your voice is important to us. Remember also, I want to let you know, today we had a visitor at the mayor's hours and Mac Center... MAC Center for the Arts is having an exhibit and a sale this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And North Song Spring Concert will be having their concerts on May 17 at 7:00 p.m. and May 19 at 4:00 p.m. at the United Church in Newport. Anything else, or will we?
Where is this May 13th meeting at?
At the gymnasium here.
What time, please?
At 5:30. Next item on the agenda is old business. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Chase? Suck your respect. Treasurer Johnson?
Oh, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't take back my earbud, I'm sorry. Yes. There was nothing to ask.
City manager. Okay, so first, I'd like to send out two dos to our recreation and parks director, Mike Brown, and his team for organizing Green Update. It was great to actually be out there with the residents, seeing everybody get back to the community. I do want you to know, and this addresses some of the questions that are out here, that the mayor and the council member are remaining focused, and with the treasurer, who's been extremely helpful on the compliance, the waste, and figuring out what we need to do, and looking at all the appropriate numbers and accounts. The mayor and the city manager are reviewing the personnel policy and plan, we are planning to have that policy discussion put on the next council agenda if it's so ready, okay? Council members have requested financial information on city assets and credit cards and stored discounts and other financial information. It's our intention, if we have all that information ready, to place that as well on the next agenda, next council meeting's agenda. Speeding and signage, as well, was originally discussed. I've done some research on that, and I will meet with the city manager, go over what I found, and then he can take it to his department heads, and whenever ready, it'll be on the next council meeting or the council meeting after that. I have been informed that we should have the recordings policy on the next upcoming council agenda. That would just be for discussion first, it won't be for a vote. I did receive a query from Canada regarding a missing headstone that may have been related to Newport, and I would like to thank Commissioner Shanat, who immediately said he would take charge and handle that, and I want to thank you for that. So, remember that, you know, the mayor puts the agenda together and goes through the documents, and if any of my council members need to get to the city manager, need to get something onto the agenda, you all get the priority, so I want to make sure it's your council, we have that. And if anybody else needs to have something on, if you just email us, and we will try our best to get that on timely. There's going to be just a slight change on the mayor's hours. My mayor's hours are from Monday from 9:00 to 11:00 here at the council meeting, but because some of my, we've been getting a lot of volumes, and sometimes members would like specific dedicated time, I'm changing Wednesdays to just be the appointments only, so Mondays open, anybody can come in, and Wednesday will be by appointment only. Of course, if you show up or not go and ask you to leave, but I'm trying to get that a little bit more controlled. Shout out to all the nurses, Happy Nurses Week. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to set the next meeting, the regularly scheduled council meeting, for May 2024. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post aye. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Setting set. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the regular meeting at?
Yes, that's the correct time, 7:35.
Seven?
I'm ready to motion.
Whoa, 7:35. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a, post aye. Ayes have it, the motion is carried, and I thank everybody very much.